I want all this workshop to order. I want to remind everybody that this is a workshop for the council and that when we are done discussing an item, then we'll ask anybody that has anything they have to add to it, if not, then we go on to the second item. First order of business is a comprehensive land plan?
Need adoption of the agenda first, please.
Oh, excuse me. I'm trying to get this working. Do you have a motion for the adoption of the agenda for today?
I'll make a motion, please.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now we have a distinguished guest here. Just come talk to us about the comprehensive land plan.
Good morning. Distinguished, I'll take that on any day. My name is Adam Hazel. I'm the planning director at the Georgia Mountains Regional Commission. That's the regional government office that services 13 county area. And we had the pleasure of working with Raven County and all the cities on the update of their comprehensive plan a few years ago. We will be looking toward an update beginning next year. And I was asked by Ms. Linda to speak with you about possibly doing some other changes or even an advanced study for specifically for Sky Valley, that you had some ambitions with regard to the core of your community and some other ideas. And so I'm here as much to answer questions and hear from you folks about what you would like to do in that regard. The comprehensive plan will be a vehicle that we'll want to use in the future to incorporate any particular projects that you want to pursue, both to make them available for grant funding and to complement any of your particular ordinances that you would want to put in place to enforce new policies that you want to adopt. But in the interim, I understand that you folks have some particular ambitions, and so I wanted to see what we could do to help you out in pursuing some of those. And I don't know if you want to preface that with any additional thoughts?
Well, obviously, we've talked a little bit about, you know, what the, I guess, what the regional commission can do as far as the comprehensive plan to the detail that maybe the council is looking at doing. So maybe they have some questions to see which way we need to go.
One of the first things I know that we've been advised to do is to get a feasibility study based on what's feasible here.
Okay.
Can you help us with that? Is that something that you're?
Certainly. Depending upon the scope of what you want, that is something that we can do. If you're talking about a few particular properties, if you're talking about the larger scope of other areas of the city and the street fundage along the main roads there, that is certainly something that we can come in and help assist in terms of gathering information and talk about the, you know, the economic viability of certain ideas that you would want to pursue and let you know some of the things that you would have to look into with regard to the eventual development of properties through either private hands, public-private partnerships, that sort of thing. So that's certainly something that we can do.
Would that be a study in depth enough to replace an independent feasibility study? Or would that be? Will your group provide us a full study? Or would we have a kind of a condensed version of it?
A feasibility study is kind of open-ended term, so it depends on what you want out of it. But we can certainly sit down and, at the very least, I know what we can do is give you everything that we have in terms of information and resources that might take you a lot farther away in terms of bang for the buck, if you will, to get what you're looking for. The main thing that I would be asking of you folks is what is the end goal that you would be looking for with regards to the eventual development of the area? And what resources is it that you are trying to activate to try to inspire or pursue any of those changes? Our specialty obviously comes in working with the government itself, so that way you are making the best piece of your resources and then couching that in terms of what a private developer might be bringing into the table. So I would ask that we have a formal sit-down. We literally get into parcel by parcel what it is that you're looking for and what type of items that you would be, like I said, bringing to the table in the near-term, the long-term, what type of schedule you're looking at? And how much of it is a matter of literally trying to bring the change? How much of it is a matter of, well, when the change comes, we want it to look and function a certain way? So we have a discussion about that, and then I would tailor our end product and report based upon what you folks would want.
Somebody put out a document, I don't know when, and Linda, it's the document you sent us that came out titled Economic Development. You shared that with us. And I think all of this was kind of ventured back in 2012, maybe, and I'm not, who authored this?
I can take a look at it.
See if that's something you did.
I know my writing style.
That's a plan survey. That was a comprehensive. It's a survey that counties.
These read as some of the summary notes from the plan process. I don't know if that exact language is what made it into the final comp plan for Sky Valley, but that was when we did our public hearings and when we spoke to key staff and stakeholders, we summarized our notes into the various categories, housing, natural resources, economic development. And what you see there is basically the summation of those meetings and the results of that process.
Okay. So this is your summation of that? So that's great. And this pretty much outlines where I think, you know, several things Sky Valley needs to go to grow a little bit. We've got to grow.
When we went through that process, there was that discussion about trying to invigorate, for lack of a better term, we'll call it downtown Sky Valley right now, the core of the community, based upon there was the prospect of additional development that was going to be coming in, some multi-story structures, and there is the talk of, you know, what can we do to bring back the possibility of a hotel into the area, a possible conference facility, and maybe something that could act as a small commercial shop or restaurant in the community. So there was talk about that as part of a general economic development ambition for Sky Valley. And at the time, we weren't prepared in the group, in our discussions, no one was prepared to say, yes, we want definitively X, Y, and Z. We want it to look exactly like this. So that was something that we were putting off, and that might be what we're looking at now, based upon what I'm hearing.
Okay. How do we go about that?
Okay. The first thing that we want to do is have a very particular session with multiple members of my staff, meeting with you guys and talking about explicitly what you, the city with a capital C, would like to see delivered, both in terms of a product here and in terms of the end product for the community. Then we would certainly set up a public information process. We'd want to have a number of the citizens and residents to come out and share their thoughts. We would talk with realtors. We would talk with hoteliers. We would look into the resources as far as what the city would be wanting to, like I said, what are they going to be able to bring to the table in terms of utilities, long-term financing, et cetera? And ultimately get into what we would call a conceptual design phase and say, okay, based upon what we're hearing, you can possibly sustain X thousand square feet of this, X thousand square feet of commercial, and try to literally put the pieces of the puzzle onto the ground and see what it might look like and how that works for your community. And ultimately come up with something that you would then be able to use to take two private developers, take two potential partners and say, we're willing to support and want to see something like this. Does that work with you? And then hopefully we find someone that can be a good partner with you and bring in what you're looking for.
I think that was all passed way back when Merrill put out the first, I think most of what we want to do was follow his plan anyway, so.
And that may well be the case. That would just be a matter of taking some of those materials and updating it to, you know, current finances and building trends and this sort of thing. If that's the case, fine. Our effort is we are essentially support staff for the local governments within our region. And we, our job is to help out when you have special needs like this, to fill in those gaps where you don't have somebody that's readily doing this. So whatever you would need out of it, how little or how much, we would want to try to help out.
And that's part of your services or would they bring any additional costs?
Depending upon the scope, we might ask for something. Just largely when it comes into the multiple travel, public meetings, and the extent of work that comes outside of our work scope, we certainly have stuff that through our dues and our DCA funds that would go toward this. But, you know, the more time and money that comes into it that affects what we do with everything else, obviously we look to recoup some of that cost. But we would tailor it to whatever budget you would ask.
And you said when you first started talking that you're actually, this comprehensive plan that was developed now was what, 14? And you've got a new one due when, next year?
We will be starting that next year, yes.
Okay. So in other words, we got to have it ready anyway.
It will be coming up soon. And that's where you folks will probably be having that discussion in terms of, does that document go far enough for you? Do you want to do something that takes that one deeper? Or do you want to do something that's a little bit more independent and earlier? So that way you can start your follow-up implementation efforts earlier as well.
Have you ever dealt with a city like Sky Valley before? We don't have anything here, okay? And the cities that I've traveled in the state, they at least have something to start with. So have you had any dealings with a similar-sized city with the lack of things and brought them to a certain point?
As a city, no, but I've certainly done work with, started off on a project with the Innsbruck Golf Community inside Hatlen, where they were trying to bring something of a conference center facility into their community. And we've also done work with a number of smaller cities in the area, everything from Maynesville and Young Harris and Clermont, you know, places where folks are finding everything that they would need outside the city limits. And what they can do as far as an identity and what resources they bring to the table are obviously pretty limited, especially those communities that don't have a property tax. So that's one of the things you put into the equation. As always, it's a matter of, well, here's what you want and here's what resources you have available. What's the best way to find that compromise between two? Might be down here, might be up there. That's what you go through the exercise to discover. And we would certainly make sure that, like I said, whatever works fits for Sky Valley. I would also say that you would probably want to make sure these discussions look at it maybe not under the assumption of, well, we want to do whatever development for the next two years. You want to do the development when you can afford to do it, and you want to make sure that when it comes in, it's what you want. And so you dress it in that way. And if it happens as early as you want, great. If it takes time to find the right fit, what's more important is getting it right rather than, you know, getting rushed.
You've had success with these smaller cities? And how you define success is a matter of?
For some of their pursuits, you're looking for something that's very particular. With a number of communities, we certainly helped out with design schemes or conceptual designs for things like parks. The park at Maynesville is something that has come along very quickly, and the restoration of historic properties. So there are elements that we have done. Depending upon what you want, you know, I don't know if we've done something exactly that would bring in, say, a hotel into a community, but.
Well, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I'm just trying to see, based on your track record, what your, you know, success rate would be. It's not your success rate per se, it's the community that has to be successful.
Well, my division sets up the plan for the community, and then there is an economic development wing which helps out as far as the financing that comes to make things happen. So I've been pretty successful in giving things that people want, and they're chasing those realities. What they get in the back half, that's more the market-driven aspect.
What you thought on this next site coming in by George Power, I think that's pretty interesting, that they have targeted Raven County as a next growth site for them to prepare for. Any thoughts on that?
I can't offer anything comprehensive at this point as far as what it means. And when I come to a community, my job is to help you give what you want out of it. You always run that concern with this part of the state where a lot of folks that are up here are up here to get away from everyone else. And a lot of your neighbors and peer communities, they're fighting to retain their rural character, but at the same time, they also want jobs for them or their children or whatever. You know, the market is shifting in that ground. So I always tell a community, fight for what you want, whether or not that's what the realtors or George Power, whatever, says is coming. You know, it's nothing definitive as far as that, yes, everyone is going to come to Raven County. You guys have as much say based upon what you invest in terms of roads, utilities, and schools, et cetera. That influences that level of development. So if it's a banner you want, then work with it. Wave it and find ways to capitalize on it. If it's something that is, you know, a little bit of a concern for finances or other reasons, then now you know enough to respond.
What Alan was saying about the community, I think we're unique in the fact that we don't have any land and one man owns it. Probably you've never worked in a situation like this, but based on that, are you still willing to come up here and give us ideas and a plan?
Most certainly.
What we think we would like, and then it would be up to us to sell it to Merrill to get the land to do this.
And as I saw a lot of communities, the reality more often is not, or not, is that even if there is a predominant landowner, and I had a similar experience with the city of Marietta, eventually that condition will change. You know, the person, they'll leave it off to the heirs, and the heirs will do something, or they will eventually sell it off for financial gain. Like I said, you want to plan for whatever preparation and change might happen whenever it happens. And if you have something on the books that the sales begin as early as next week, then you're ready for it. If it does take a year, two, or five, then you at least have the plans when you need them, and you can come back and revisit them as those conditions change. And it might be as much that what you're thinking of is, okay, if we know for sure that he's not going to sell, what's Plan B? What do we need to do to retain the viability of our community and look at what might happen in the future? What's going on at Scaly Mountain? What's going on at Dillard and eventually along the 441 corridor that might alter the dynamics and influence Sky Valley? In which case, you know enough, all right, we're done looking at here for now, let's turn our attention elsewhere. If ultimately what you reveal is that your options are in fact limited, then at least you know that and you can then move on.
Well, I think that brings it to the, one of the big points in my pursuit of this comprehensive plan, Bob, is that we do have an owner, whether it's a single or multiple owners, but we do have an owner here who is willing to work for the city and would like to sell the property. But what I want everybody else to understand too is during zoning regulations that are out there now, he could very easily sell that property to something as detrimental to Sky Valley. If we don't put a plan in place, we have no control over the future of it. We don't own the land, but we can control where Sky Valley goes. Or we can sit here and say, hey, we don't want a comprehensive land plan, we don't want to do anything, and we end up with a factory on Cannon Hill. And if viable to do that, so that's what we need to kind of work on.
What I will do is I will go back and make a few notes based upon our discussion today and send a memo to Ms. Linda that she can share with all of you. And then as you folks decide what you would like to do proceed, we can schedule another, like I said, a more formal meeting to specify what it is that you would like as far as a product and a sense of a vision for this. And take this as far as you wish to go. I look forward to it. Thank you.
Paul, do you have anything?
No.
All right. I'll open it up to the public. You have?
I would just like to know if you would be part of, or if you recommend, before the process begins, a community needs assessment survey? Is that something you recommend? And is it also something you could be part of?
I'll first ask, when you say that, what is it you're thinking of?
Basically, what they're talking about. Does the community, what are the community's feelings of what are the possibilities?
Well, the comprehensive plan has that at a certain, let's say, a 30,000-foot level. It didn't get into the very parcel specifics of, say, a conceptual design for downtown Sky Valley, for instance. But we did talk about the idea of, you know, what are the housing dynamics? What are the residents needing? How does the absence of a predominant employer in the city affect your market? Those are things that we already have a base understanding of, and we will certainly investigate, like I said, as part of the public information process. We'll invite folks to come out and say, okay, as long as this process is open, what would you like us to consider and examine? So that would certainly be a part of it. And then we use that to feed into the back half of the process where we just have fun with it and say, okay, this was the original concept, but this is 2018. What do we want to do? And what could do? Or what could we do?
To add on, Suzy, would you, are you suggesting something like a questionnaire, Suzy, that maybe going out and asking all of the population of Sky Valley things like, would you be interested in a convenience store? How would you feel about a convention center? How do you feel about sewer? You know, questions about specific things, how do they, in other words, how do you feel about all these alternatives? If we could make them feasible, how would you feel about them if we did them? That kind of approach?
Yes. And that's what I was asking, if they could be part of that in a more objective way? Or how do you recommend that we go about assessing this?
We can certainly do that. Like I said, part of this would be me sitting down with the council and making sure that what is done and how it's done is done to the way that they would prefer. And if the notion is we want to have a, at this level of public involvement, do a survey process and have a couple of design charades and whatever, that's fine. Like I said, we want to make them happy, and they want to make you happy.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. I have a couple of questions. Number one, what is the cost involved for you to do this feasibility study that you provided us?
The?
Or whatever the plan that you gave Chip? What would the cost?
The comprehensive plan was done through our state funds. There was no additional cost to the city.
There's no additional cost. Okay. So the first thing that comes in my mind would be, well, if we're asking him to do something, i.e. a survey, which we can all do locally, that will be a cost. That's probably not in the budget, number one. Number two, for me, homeowners have to know, or at least have a voice, of what we are considering or would want to do. And we should have a budget to that and outline. And also, if you're considering a convention center, i.e. a hotel, what's the ROI for that? I mean, we need to know. I mean, who's going to come up here to a convention center in Sky Valley? And how much money are we going to be able to receive versus how much money are the homeowners going to have to support this? Not only in our taxes, but as well as any assessments, anything to maintain this whatever structure we're considering on a land that we don't even own.
I may offer two follow-ups to that. An online survey or a paper survey that's painted out of public meetings, there'd be no cost to the city for that. We have a subscription with Survey Monkey that we use for a lot of things, so it's easy enough to do an online survey and make papers available.
Unfortunately, a lot of people here do not have.
And like I said, I could do paper versions of that as well. So the survey is the least amount of our concerns. The notion of any facility like a conference center, hotel, et cetera, what would, what we would be doing is looking at the land availability and some of the other prospectives of the market, sharing that with a realtor or with a hotelier, and asking them as far as, you know, what goes in exactly, a market study for those. We may find, as the part of the discovery process, that the ROI doesn't work for them, which, in which case, now we know, and we can move on to Plan B. So you're not saying that the city needs to go out and spend X amount of dollars to make a hotel and then hope someone comes in. Part of this is obviously to do the business process of identifying whether that would even work.
So what would be the cost to do that market study for us on any particular project?
Depending upon?
Depending on the project.
Right.
But give us a price range. If you do, let's say we're going to come in and put a convention center that everybody's talking about, what would be a cost involved to do that whole entire market study, feasibility study, to provide us with that information?
For a single property market feasibility study on something like that, I would say somewhere between $3,000 and $5,000.
How much?
$3,000 to $5,000. There's the gentleman back there, I'll stand up first.
One of the problems that I think we've had on any survey that we put out is the perception by some, depending on their political leanings, that the questions are slanted towards one answer or the other. Could you put together a survey for this community that would ask for an unbiased question that couldn't be, this is what you want answered, or this is what you, way you wanted it answered? I'd like to see one that we would have that would be third-party, I guess, is that it would not be perceived as slanted one way or the other.
We would certainly be trying for that. A lot of it would be prefaced on the parameters of what the end product is supposed to be looking at, obviously. And then, you know, ultimately, it's going to be reviewed by somebody, whether it's the city council or an advisory committee, someone locally is going to be looking at it before we consider it live or active, because we would want them to make sure we're delivering something that they want us to ask. So whether or not in that level of filtering it accomplishes what you're asking for, I can't say. We would certainly be looking for that, because I'm not looking at it from a political standpoint. I'm looking at it from a functional standpoint for the community.
I'm going. Just a comment. I think we're getting lost in the weeds. You've got two projects that have to do with economic development. First being the category of infrastructure, like sewer and water, electricity, and internet. So you've got infrastructure, and those are things with which the city might be involved and have a cost. For example, you know, there's no way that the residents of Sky Valley can afford, it's not feasible, to afford a tax base, to afford a sewer system. So there's got to be another revenue stream for that. There's got to be another way to fund that. Now, the economic development side, I can think of one way in which the city could be involved, and that's revenue bonds. And I don't know whether this particular city charter allows us to issue revenue bonds, but that's a question perhaps our attorney could find out. You know, I've done revenue bonds in my past. And so for a project, you know, that might be a way to assist somebody to come in. But they're still going to have to do a feasibility study, because it's got to be financially feasible for them to go to bank. So I don't think we're looking at big money here for us to be doing this, except in the nature of infrastructure. We might need to spend some money to do things like that. And I'll cut it off there, excuse me, but just by education.
Alan, I want to, there's one more question.
I understand what I understand.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I mean, in listening to all this, I think the comprehensive land plan is a really good thing. But my question comes back to, before we get into that in the direction, it seems like we need to know what the general population of Sky Valley, what direction do they want to go in? So before we start thinking about a plan for the sewer or hotel or anything, it seems like we want to know whether the population of Sky Valley, do they, what do they want? Do they want that? I mean, Sky Valley, to me, has always seemed like it doesn't know what it wants to be. So, I mean, I just think before we move forward, we need to know what, you know, the majority of people, what direction do the majority of the people in Sky Valley want? of the people, what direction do the majority of the people in Sky Valley want to move forward in? It seems like that's the place to begin.
And I would say you should look at the past comprehensive plan because that gives you an idea of what was said then.
And, you know, to your point, I agree with you, but you know, before you, you can't just go out here and say, do you want this or that in terms of words? I think that we do need some illustrations and some, you know, something to give you an idea of what it looks like. Because if you say a hotel to somebody, you know, you've got one person thinking of a five-ring hotel sitting on the side of the mountain and you've got the person sitting next to you thinking of a Big Street Plaza sitting out there. And without some kind of design and sketch and so forth to give you an idea of what the landscape would look like with, in a particular item in it, you see what I'm saying? It, it gives you too broad a stroke to understand. Everybody looks at it from a different perspective.
Right, but don't we have to own the land to be able to then consider, not lease land, but to own land, how much cost would that be then we want to consider moving forward?
We don't need to own the land, okay? We are a city and we got, the city governs what goes on within the city through zoning and comprehensive planning, okay? Has nothing to do with ownership of the land. We, as a city, we don't own this particular track right here. This particular track is zoned for downtown development right here. And it's already got, a lot of the illustrations are already done, okay? So that's already in place.
Well, you've mentioned that the so-called owner can literally sell the land that we're talking about.
He can unless we put some further restrictions on it to, to go further. Yes, this, this can be sold for anything that falls under the commercial zoning, okay? But if we help move forward a bigger vision, okay, then we, as a community, kind of help derive the, drive the future of what Sky Valley looks like. If not, we have very little controls.
If, if I may, because I don't want this, a point to get lost here. None of this is something that is a dictate on what happens in local land. The notion is that, to the extent that any government has the ability to influence development through roads, infrastructure, utility improvements, environmental policies, et cetera, you want to package something that attracts what you want to attract and is a disincentive for the type of stuff you don't want. You don't want a landfill up here. You don't want adult establishments up here. So you have policies that, that mitigate that type of thing. And to the extent that you might be trying to attract something, then you put in policies and other measures that might work in attracting that. You go to the private developer and you say, here's some land that meets your, your size requirements. Here's what we're willing to do as far as supporting it and, and here's a feasibility study that shows that this could work. And I think that's what they're trying to set up, is something that at least makes it possible that they can use to advertise and share to the, the private enterprise and make that possible for the area.
Exactly. And to try to, you know, bring in the right developers to do it. As Neil just said, we don't want a trailer park over here, do you? Well, you could have one.
And just for everybody's information, the owner of all the land, at the end of last year, understood this process and was in favor of it. So, at the time, he had, and still as far as we know, has no, no intention to do anything with this property. And he suggested to us that we move forward with this sort of a plan and some of the ideas that were floated, he supported. So, the way I understand that this situation, if we do move forward with this, that basically puts in concrete that this is, what this is going to be, what we're looking for.
Developers will tell...
Prevents him from coming in and saying, I want to put a landfill in here.
Well, what developers love is a sense of surety that when they go through an application and development process, they know what they're going to get from the municipality and from the, the community that they're investing in. So that's why they, if they see that you have something that demonstrates that this is viable and that it's going to fit in with the community and you're fully supportive of it, that makes it more attractive to them on behalf of their investment.
And that's all we can do to make Sky Valley attractive. We don't own the land, we can make it attractive.
And that's what he's looking for.
And that's what he's looking for.
Well, that because they should also sell it without...
Makes land better used than...
Listen here. I want to thank everyone. We've got to move along here and Paul, thank you very much for coming and I'm sure we'll be back here. Alan. I'm going to Paul. Paul's the next guy.
What I'll just quickly say is I, I'm sorry, I don't have a business card with me, but our website is gmrc.gadot com and my contact information is off of that website. So, and I'll, I'll be back again in the future.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, we'll move on to, I don't hear him. The fire department lease. And we have Paul?
Sure. Just a piece of paper coming your way. Just a couple of points to consider. This is not a normal lease in any way, so some comparison to a normal lease will not work. From the fire department's point of view, the purpose of this lease is to document an arrangement that has worked largely satisfactorily for both parties for over 20 years. The reasons the fire department occupies the fire station, the leased building, are, one, to enhance its ability to provide fire protection to the citizens of Sky Valley and other areas in its fire districts; two, enable home and building owners within five road miles of the fire station to purchase fire insurance. The annual lease fee is $10, which clearly will not overflow the city's coffers. At the current one mil, fire department funding rate by the city, home and building owners' profit, in part from the fire department's use of the leased building due to the large deductions in fire insurance premiums. Lastly, regarding routine maintenance of the grounds immediately adjoining the fire station, the fire department has done so for over New Year's. And in paragraph 8b of the proposed lease says we will continue to do so. However, paragraph 8c does place responsibility for larger property maintenance issues on the property owner, i.e. the city. And Paul Bosman with the fire department is here. If you guys have any other questions or concerns.
I'm trying to hide in the corner, but my shiny dome probably gets, probably gets me away here. No, I've got one, thank you, sir.
I had a chance to look at the lease and I didn't have any questions. Y'all have any from there?
Yes, you mentioned, right on the tail end of that paragraph, you mentioned a larger cost to go back to the, I guess, to the city. Is that what you mentioned?
Yes.
Is there a certain amount? What is the larger cost?
Well, what would you say to that, Paul?
I would say that probably locking in a dollar figure is probably not realistic. We all, anyone who owns a home has annual, we mow the lawn, we break the leaves, we trim the bushes. That and more, actually, the fire department has, has always done. Anything beyond what I would consider, what we would consider annual routine grounds And a superb recent example is the removal of some trees that were seriously threatening. In fact, in, in fact, one of them did damage to the building, threatened the building. That's not routine annual maintenance, I think, in, in, in anyone's point of view in terms of keeping the lawn though. That's what we're trying to differentiate between what a person would normally do just to keep the place looking nice and what needs to be done on a larger scale to protect the building.
If the roof needed replacing, that would be city responsibility.
No, sir, that would be our responsibility because the, the lease differentiates between the building and the land. And all of the major improvements to the building, including a roof, everything that's been done to the building in the last 20 to 25 years, the fire department has paid for. And the lease holds us to that responsibility. We will continue to pay for that.
And that's specified like that?
It's in the lease, it's, it's, it's so stated.
It says anything exceeding $5,000 would be paid for by...
The lesser.
The lesser, which is the city.
Well, that's kind of not routine maintenance though, Linda, that's, that's...
Roof is more than...
No, it, that, no, that, let me see if we can, if we can find that paragraph. That is addressing...
That's under maintenance and repairs, correct?
Yeah, let's, let me just pull that for the benefit of the local folks. Leasee, Leasee agrees to make repairs, this is repairs to the building, to make repairs as needed to maintain the usefulness and structural integrity of the building. Repairs of catastrophic damage, which is, is not a new roof due to age, repairs of catastrophic damage not covered by Leasee's insurance and exceeding $5,000 shall be paid for by the Leasor, which would be the city. So if the land collapses and the building falls apart and our insurer comes back to us and says, yes, sorry guys, this thing was built on a whole pile of rotten wood, we're not going to pay for your building that was grossly irresponsible of the city to do it that way in the first place, then that's the city's loss.
So the city then does have some kind of insurance for the cover, cover the fire department that does not cover?
The fire department carries the insurance on the building?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, no.
I didn't hear that?
They, they have the insurance, but things that are catastrophic are not covered by them. Do we, as a city, have an insurance separate?
The fire department carries the whole policy on that building.
But he just said, and catastrophic does not cover it.
No, catastrophes that our, that our insurance company declines.
Correct, so then, whatever we, you decline, do we have something to cover? That's what I'm asking.
No, not currently, no.
For, for example, you're probably not carrying flood insurance. No, sir, we're not carrying flood insurance. If memory serves, there was a house on Sugar Bush that actually got washed down. There was actually flooded, flood took it down in my right... That'd probably be categorized as landslide. I mean, it was due to rain, but I, I'm not, I don't think the federal flood insurance would, would enter into that, I don't know. But that's actually an excellent example, sir, because it kind of goes along with the hypothetical ridiculous example that I gave, which is the building is built on a pile of rotting stumps. There are spots around here where there are piles of rotting stumps that, and, and there's an, an ex-mayor of Clayton did that, in, in fact, and, and lost his building for, for his stupidity. But we're just saying that, and we're extremely well insured. We're insured by a company called American Alternative Insurance, which is the master company for VFIS, volunteer fire insurance, a nationwide organization specializes in, in volunteer fire departments. We are heavily insured by them, they have an outstanding reputation. And it would really have to be something totally out of the ordinary for our insurers not to cover it if it was catastr- if it was in the realm of catastrophic damage.
And I understand, but you're leasing the building, so we should be responsible for anything your insurance will not be covered, covering, so that's what I'm asking. Does the city have an additional insurance that will cover over and above what your insurance does not cover? Is that an out-of-line question?
If, if their insurance is going to deny it, I can't imagine we could have any kind of insurance, but we'd cover it. I mean...
I, I think Ms. Linda makes an excellent point, yeah.
I mean, with the agreement the city have with the fire department on the insurance policy, the city made sure that, you know, at the time, many years ago, that that was, they were sufficiently meaningful covered. So I don't think our insurance is going to provide an additional...
I understand, I'm just going to give you an example. For example, you know, houses that were not in the flood zone before, they are in the flood zone now. So they weren't covered then, now they have to be covered from this point on. I guess I know you too.
Excuse me, before, before you talk, we're not done. We asked him because he was part of the group. Neil, if you've got anything on this?
I find it at least satisfactory. I just had one clarification I'd like y'all to consider. And that's the last sentence of section 8c where it says, "Leasor also agrees to remove snow and ice from the apron between the building and the street expeditiously to enable Leasee's trucks to safely exit and enter the building." I think we ought to say, we ought to qualify a little bit and say, "Leasor also agrees to remove snow and ice from the apron between the building and the street," insert the word "as" expeditiously, followed by "as possible to enable Leasee's, Leasee's trucks to safely exit and enter the building." If there's a fire in going on at the time, that would be the very first priority. If not, the first priority is we have right now are roads. And the next priority would be...
My only comment to that, sir, would be that we never know when there's going to be a fire. And we have, in fact, come to the building after the roads had been plowed and after we had manually cleared the apron, only to find that the city had put up 12 or 18-inch berm of snow up a gap between the apron and the street and we couldn't get the trucks out.
Well, I think that's something that can be worked out between us without any problem whatsoever. And I'm not hard over by, by comment.
But that's the only reason...
I just never liked the word "expeditiously" standalone with some little qualification. That, that was my point.
Times of vessels.
Yeah. And I'm through.
On, on that same point, we don't currently own a piece of equipment that can plow a driveway. If we plow in, we're going to push against your door.
Got any snow shovels?
So you don't want us to plow the roads and you want us to come shovel your driveway?
No, like in a facetious way. I want you to maintain all the, get everything done in order. I happen to think that clearing in front of the fire station and a route up to Sky Valley Way makes a lot of sense to have that as one of the first things you could do.
I'm just saying we have no equipment to do that. So if we agree to do that, they will have to do it by hand.
Well, I, I would have to differ because historically it's been done up the last three or four years. Policy, something has changed in the last two, three, four years.
That's correct, yes.
What, what did we do? I mean, we can pull down in the driveway if we don't run into your doors and push out, but we need to...
You could also put change, you could put change on the track or take the, the hoe in there and pull the snow back.
Linda, to get you subcontract that, I mean, we had some work last year in order to just get our roads cleared.
I just want everyone to know, we don't have the equipment to do it. I mean, we talked about getting a little RTV to do that.
I was talking about getting that we do that.
I'm sorry?
I was talking about purchasing something.
That's what I'm saying, yes.
In our plans.
We don't need to purchase anything to do that. We've got equipment to do it.
But we'd have better equipment if also we bought what we talked about.
Sure. Spend some money.
I'm not saying we wouldn't. All right, I have no problem.
Good. We'll move on to, well, Mr. Mayor.
Paul, sir, you, you made a comment just now about, there was no problem with this one issue with snow regurgitating until two or three, four years ago. Do you have any idea what that was, what that problem was as to why that happened?
I, I, not, not to pick here as too finely, but I don't think I used the word problem, but something changed a few years ago. Up until a few years ago, when the city plowed, they made, not in our request, just the, the good auspices of the city, they made a real effort to come in, they would make a sweep into that apron. No, it was not 100% cleanup job. We came in behind them by hand and did what we could. We came in behind them by hand and did what we could, but they would make a sweep with the plow and scoop out a good part of it, and they never ever, until recently, never ever left a burn between the road and that apron. So, since it never happened in the past.
They can make the sweep coming in, Isaiah was coming down, they, they took, so there, or now they're just coming straight down.
So it's an administrative issue as far as public works and stuff, I don't believe it if we hire somebody. Now, it may not be a policy, it may be one individual truck driver's feelings or whatever. Well, I'm saying, the situation has changed in the last two or three years.
And that's, and that's the difference, sweeping in and getting the, you know, the edge versus doing the whole. I'm just saying we didn't have anything to do with the whole, between the door and the streets.
Evidently, that's all they did and made a sweep in.
Right.
And took out the.
I mean, I could see that, that we would be capable of doing that.
Rather than leaving the big pile like we're doing in front of everybody else's.
That helps with special doors.
Special.
In a big snow, because it rolls off of both sides, in a small snow, they can shift it one way or the other. Bigger snows are just.
Remember we had less equipment now than we had four years ago, or is it, is it plowing the road?
There's a difference between coming in and getting what you can get as you're driving and then clearing all the way from the street to the door.
There is, it's huge.
Huge difference. So, if we're going to do from the, which this says, from the door to the building, I mean, from the building to the street, that's just something that we have never done and aren't prepared to do, but, I mean, we have limited resources. I just want everybody to understand what you're asking.
I think Milk's question might have been, uh, you, we used to come in and make one sweep through the driveway and that had been happening for the last three years.
Yeah, whatever it's been, two or three years.
Milk was saying, do we have, still have the same equipment today that we have when we were doing that sweep to the driveway?
Sure, we just have different plowers.
Yes, yes, that's their answer, yes.
Sure.
We can solve.
There we go.
The highway department will be notified to sweep that come in when they plow.
But can we, so can we agree to just do that and not the whole driveway? Or do y'all want us to shovel the driveway, because that's where we're at? That's the question, we'll do whatever.
Whatever we did to you.
But that's not what this says, is my point.
Well, how would you suggest that we?
If it just says the apron, that covers it. If it's the driveway between the building and the street, then that's.
It really comes down folks to whether you want us to be, whether you want to be sure that we can get a fire truck out of that building at three o'clock in the morning when the snow? Obviously not before the streets have been plowed, there are human limitations.
Right.
But once the streets have been, have been plowed, um, do you place the ability of us to move a truck safely on the same level of priority as, as you do the basic cleaning of the streets?
I know the same thing you're saying, if we knew exactly what they were doing three years ago, you got in and out alright?
If you did exactly the same thing that we did two or three years ago, it would be hugely better than the last two or three years, but it does.
My question would.
I deliberately didn't answer your question.
Would it answer your question? That if, if we went back to just the sweep as they were coming down, would that satisfy you?
Question is, would it satisfy the city? It would be hugely better than the last two or three years, but we're a volunteer department and we're not, our people are not going to get out and hand shovel the rest of it the next day, so it questions, you know.
Either you've done it in the past, or you've, if you've rolled through any part that was left up there.
What, what about separate questions, you Bob?
We have, but not expeditiously.
If, if, if you get a, if you have a house on fire, minutes count. If when they get to the firehouse and the people driving the firetruck have to spend five minutes shoveling snow away that could already been taken care of, why would the city want to do that?
Wait a minute.
And protect its citizens, public safety?
We're not, we're talking right now of making a sweep through, okay?
Right, I know, I am.
We make the, we make the sweep through.
Right.
We go on and plow the city's streets.
Okay.
Okay? Now, if we'd left orders to our superintendent that when they're all done plowing all the streets, go back there with the man and have him shovel anything away from the door.
I think that's great.
We'd be expanded.
That'd be awesome. Sign us up for that, when you put Bob just that, put it down.
Yeah, we realize it takes us a couple of days to.
I, I want to know what Linda's huge big concern is about having the road, road works crew staff being able to do what this contract dictates.
My, my, my point is we don't, we're not prepared to do driveways unless we're going to do them by hand.
Who does the visitor's center?
Who does the visitor's center?
Yeah, in the west parking lot, the Pally Cal, Calorine, who does their parking lots? Who clears the snow out of them?
That's a huge parking lot.
Who does, who clears the snow out of it?
I mean, we can push through that. If we push down the driveway, listen to me for a second.
Sure.
If we push down the driveway, it's going to push it against the door. You don't want us to do that for sure.
They clear the sidewalks.
What sidewalks?
The little sidewalks going into the building. Into the Pally Calorines and into the west office, they clear the.
We've never cleared those, my. I mean, I'm not aware that we've ever shoveled any snow by hand.
There we go. We're here to please.
And you guys have to remember, we had a lot of snow this year. People can't get here, our workers don't live in this town, they can't get here. You had James alone in a truck. Before he can get our main roads and our staging areas for our ambulance is cleared, by the time he gets it cleared, he's got to go back and start that same section again because the snow was coming down that fast. That was this year, I wasn't here prior. One man, one truck, he got to clear, okay, here's our staging area for the ambulance. Oh crap, go do it again, why? Because it's got another two inches on it. Trying to maintain that. And don't forget, North Carolina offers no assistance, the state offers no assistance. So he's also having to clean those roads. And his workers can't get up the mountain because they live down the mountain.
They should have already been here, for cleaning.
How you going to do that? Are you going to pay them to sit up there?
Sure, yeah, bring them in here, they can stay in the workshop there.
Because whenever it doesn't snow, what are you, what are you going to do? And when we did have a huge snow, we had a missing child on Highway two forty-six. Fire department responded, they got to their building, they got their equipment out, fine, okay? We keep that area, that wide area in the road is our staging area for the ambulance. So the only time there was a burn there that I saw this year was whenever he was trying to make his loops around the road. And we got one man and one truck and he makes the loop and when he gets through in that loop, he has to make it again because it's already built back up. There wasn't another worker there to help him. So yeah, we're out there with shovels trying to help him, but once again, I'm the only policeman that lives up here. They couldn't come help me either. So, resources is, is something that we, we're in lack of, and when a storm hits us, our workers can't even get here until sometimes the next morning, and we have a problem with that. And since me and James live here, we're able to get out and respond, but then once the workers got here, we had two of our trucks that got stuck because by the time we could get them here, the roads were so bad.
You know, that happens.
It, it, it's been happening for years, it's for cleaning.
Exactly, and some years you don't get as much snow, and some years you do. But, you know, the only way would be to house people up there every time there was snow on the radar.
This year was minimal snow, there was only one snow in December.
I'm just saying, I was out there in it, I didn't see too many people out there, and we were struggling. And we were struggling with what we got because we had one truck, and because the other guys to drive those trucks don't live here. So that, that's just something that you might want to think about.
And there's usually two people on the plow trucks, not one, usually.
We had one man in the truck trying to do it alone because his other helper could not get here.
We're all talking about optimum situations or the worst case situations muddled together. And as far as the lease is concerned, I think if we had it as expeditiously as possible and we put in the snow plan, that, that, that they should make it pass it, that, making sure there's no burn on the fire truck, but, uh, that's, I think that's about you getting.
Seems like this change accomplishes what Bob was saying.
Yeah. Okay. Let's move on to, uh, what have we got? Animal control, Linda?
Um, I sent you all a complaint, we get the complaints time to time. We've got two ordinances regarding animal control. Um, one is a eighty-seven ordinance that, the main part of it says, "All animals shall be kept under the control of the owner or his delegated representative at all times." Whether or not, whether, on or off the premises of the owner, um, so under the control of the owner is the, the kind of the key words there. In our public nuisance ordinance, number five oh eight, under animals, um, it says, "No domestic animals shall be permitted to run at large within the city limits. It shall be unlawful for any domestic animal to be running at large on these streets or sidewalks of the city unless said domestic pet is under the control of a leash, leash collar, or chain." Um, so, we've kind of got a little conflict going, so there's some question like in our park, if they have to be under the control of a person then, or under a leash, that's kind of where.
The, the problem that I see here is when you say under control, uh, is the distance. How much distance, a dog could be fifty yards down the road, he says, "I got that dog under control." I think that, uh, either, we, we have to change control to the word leash, that any dog that's out on the street with the owner, even though it's well trained, it should be on a leash. If they're in the park setting, the dog's got to be on a leash. You cannot just let them run free, even though it says here, as long as it's under control of the owner. Well, what distance are you giving that dog or to run? That's the point, and that's what's getting this all down. So if we just changed that and moved it to a leash period, every dog.
Whenever you have two ordinances that kind of conflict, you, you look at them and the one that is more specific trumps the one that's more general. And so the nineteen eighty-eight one was just under control, that's very, not specific, it's general. Whereas the nuisance ordinance from two thousand and five is pretty specific, pretty much it defines under control to be on a leash. So my opinion would be that the nuisance ordinance from two thousand and five would come into play. That basically, the law always is for people to have their dog on a leash.
But it says on the streets or sidewalks, so maybe if we're going to.
The other thing that I'm confused with is that when I put in the search engine, animal control, it comes up with the eighty-seven ordinance. You have to look or know that you need to go to the nuisance section for four point one. So my suggestion would be is that we have an animal control ordinance and we take four point one out of the nuisance ordinance and make that an animal control ordinance. And then tailor the animal control ordinance the way it meets the needs. Because if you look at four point one under animals, it says the, uh, streets or sidewalks. So you just point out, we don't have sidewalks, so what's it in there for? Um, domestic pet under the control of a leash, comma, collar, comma, or chain. The collar doesn't say that you have to have it attached to a leash. So if somebody has a shock collar, their dog can be running, and they're not at large if the owner's with it, that's another misunderstanding. If you have a shock collar and the dog is trained with that shock collar, then that should apply. Or you're going to say, nope, the only way you can do this is with a leash, there's nothing else. If your dog is out, you have to be at the end of the leash and the dog at one, at the other end of the leash. So I think you've got, right within section four point one, it's ambiguous. It's in the wrong spot as far as our ordinances are concerned because we have an animal control ordinance. And maybe we just need to put everything under a revised animal control ordinance. And the other thing would be is that we don't need to reinvent the wheel. There are other cities that have already done this, and why are we trying to do something sitting here in a group that most of us don't own dogs?
Is there any meaning to see for a dog that runs?
No, please, no, we're not done here, please. So, so anyway, that, I, I just think if we consolidate, we, we don't make it confusing and so that people understand that it's simple language in, in a location where you can hit the city website, type in under the search engine, whatever you're looking for, and employee handbook, and, and everything associated with that comes up. Animal control, everything associated with that comes up. You don't have to bounce around or know somebody who knows something to find out where to go. And then you try and spend the time to make it so that it covers all the scenarios. And then put it out to the public, see if it's, you know, another work session. That's what the purpose of these work sessions are, is to put things out there and to get feedback. I just think you could make this a lot easier.
My question real quick is, is this on the agenda because of an anonymous letter?
And that's another issue that we.
I'm sorry, but I'm saying.
That's another issue that we need to.
In other words, somebody sent an anonymous letter, I, I mean, why is this? My concern, and I've stated to many of you, that Sky Valley ordinances, too many of them have been created as a, out of reaction rather than necessity. Now, I'm not saying that this isn't a flawed ordinance, but here we're in discussion over an ordinance that is being brought up to us by an anonymous person. If they're not willing to stand behind us and tell us what it is, why are we bothering them?
I've got a question for the, uh, dog control officer. Yes, sir.
We don't have one.
Well, apparently we do. Um, resolution ninety-three point three, the appointment of a dog control officer and a creation of an animal control board. The mayor and council for the city of Sky Valley hereby, hereby approve the following resolution. Pursuant to C G A four dash eight dash twenty-one, the city of Sky Valley hereby appoints a dog control officer to enforce the regulations in the code section. The dog control officer shall be a Sky Valley police chief. The dog control officer is hereby charged with the responsibility of investigation, investigating and bringing the appropriate charges against owners of dangerous dogs or potentially dangerous dogs as defined in code section four dash eight dash twenty-one. In addition, the city of Sky Valley hereby creates an animal control board. The board shall consist of six members. The members shall be elected by the city council of Sky Valley. Members of the animal control board are charged with responsibilities and duties enumerated in O C G A four dash eight dash twenty-four. Any person who violates provisions by C dash D, they, 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 they'll be guilty of misdemeanor of high and aggravated nature. So, uh, for the dog control officer, how's it going out there?
They don't want board to convene.
So this, well, this is, this is when Mr. Adams was mayor here back in ninety-three, I believe. But, 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 but my, my point is, there appears to be things in place to address the anonymous note that Linda got. So to Al's point, why aren't we sitting here talking about it? Let's move on.
Mr. Mayor.
Consolidate the ordinances. But the volume not just, not all based on reaction of some anonymous.
One question, go.
Thank you, Bob. First of all, disclosure, I'm a dog owner. Uh, the great thing about living in Sky Valley is that our well-trained dog has a shock collar. Our well-trained dog is responsive, yeah, ninety, ninety-five percent of the time to voice control. voice control. Ninety-five percent of the time, when we walk on the streets of Sky Valley with the dog, we don't see anybody else. Unless we're down on Ridge Pole, then we'll see a car, and the dog's trained to sit when the car comes and come to us quickly so that we can put the leash on it. If we see a pedestrian or a frat on the trail, we see a pedestrian, we put the leash on the dog just in case it's one of these dog phobia people. So, there are a lot of dog owners in Sky Valley. Um, it's, it's, it's like a little community, and they all relish the chance, if they're not afraid that their dog's gonna run off, that relish the opportunity to let their dog off the leash, have the good life that we all try and enjoy in Sky Valley. And I would hope that if we, as we hone this ordinance, that we would, we'd take that into account. This is really the kind of place where, where, you know, you sort of get to do what you want, when you want, where you want, within, within normal limits. And we've gotta have laws for the bad dogs, but fine, we, we'll, we'll have that. And finally, let me just suggest that we've got a wonderful organization called Paws in Raven County with professionals that know how to pick up dogs, have a place to take them, uh, know how to be diplomatic with the owners of the outside dogs, which are the ones that come into Sky Valley and run loose. I, I, I would suggest we consider seriously letting Paws relieve the police chief of this responsibility. Thank you, Bob.
And Jim, we, we are considering that. That, it's part of the, animal control is one of the services that are being negotiated in these S D S agreements, and the last time we talked about that, Raven County was still working on their budget, and with the way it was, they had eight hours of service a day, not a big benefit, but they were talking about providing twenty-four hours a day, and we would, yes, be in favor of bringing them in and maybe getting rid of the dog control.
Thank you, Bob.
We didn't know we had.
Just a quick note, Sky Valley residents are paying eight thousand twenty-five dollars a year to Raven County for dog control. Have you seen Raven County up to your hand in dog control?
No, they don't have an office in this town.
It, it got brought up as far as this anonymous complaints, and I know the mayor sent out something yesterday. I think that what needs to be, as far as addressing that, I think that what needs to be done is that every taxpayer in the city should be aware that we have a competent city manager who is responsible for the day-to-day activities and administration of the city, and that all complaints, suggestions on how to make the city better, um, you know, whatever their, their issues are, be directed to the city manager first, and the city manager can send out an F Y I email to the council explaining that there was a complaint of sorts and that I'm handling it, but I want you to know if you get a call that I've already received this information. And then the city manager will get back to the people who are making the complaint or the suggestion with a follow-up, either if she can't answer it that moment within a couple of days, and if a couple of days go by and she still doesn't have the answer, call them and say, "I'm still working on it." And then if there's a problem, then it can go to the council. The council is a legislative body of Sky Valley, not responsible for the day-to-day activities and administration of the city. And, and if the city manager wants to handle anonymous complaints, then that's her business, but it shouldn't then go to the council as an anonymous complaint that we should handle. That's a suggestion as far as this anonymous stuff, that somebody can say, "I don't like what somebody did, but I'm a neighbor and a good friend, and I want you to throw them under the bus." Doesn't work for me.
And to that, I would just like to say, I did bring the animal control to you all because I do think it's flawed. I do think we need to do something with it. We've got things that we're not doing, the board and different stuff, and then we've got two kind of conflicting ordinances still in the books, um, and then we've got the collar situation too. So, that's why, I mean, that is a legislative thing that we gotta...
We actually just found out we have three ordinances.
So...
But that was also one of the things that was at some point discussed about all of our ordinance and codification of it.
And we got a quote for that.
Yes.
That's another...
We're on fire field here on this, but, but it's all connected.
Yeah. Um, so, the biggest point of bringing this out is if we do revise the ordinance, do we want to, do you want a draft that says it has to be on a leash, shock collar, or, you know, or do you want, I mean, what do you want in the ordinance, and then we can come up with something that's already been created, like you said, I mean, I'll recreate the will, but kind of need to know which direction, you know, in dog control.
But to Jim's point, Jim comes out as an extremely conscientious dog owner, realizing his dog's the best dog in the world, or dogs, I think you got to him, but other people may not like dogs, and it's his responsibility, not the other person's responsibility. So, Jim needs to get out and figure out what's the best way to do this for people who aren't as responsible, taking into account every personality with an animal, whether it's a turtle, a snake, or a dog, it doesn't much matter, it's still something that offends other people. I agree with him in that in Sky Valley, I'm not sure that having a, a dog on a leash every time it's out of your house is the best way to go. I don't, in fact, I don't think it is, and I don't own a dog, but I know people who are responsible. So, the trick is, is to try and make it so that the dog owner gets what he wants for his dog, and the person who isn't a dog owner or is deathly afraid, because when they were six years old, they were viciously attacked by a dog and it will never leave them, you, you need to find some middle ground. Now, go back to my T L C, compromise, C is the compromise. You need to figure out where you're gonna go with things. It's, it's a simple thing when you first look at it, but as you get into it, it's more complex, and I think it just needs time and input from the dog owners and from the other people, and then figure out where to go from there. I think it's a good point that came up, however it came up, but I think we need to look at it.
Let me to your point.
Just a minute.
My opinion is that if we did have three animal control ordinances, we need to modify that, just to have one, so you can have one place in the code that you look for. As far as specific policies, that's up for y'all to decide. We can either copy some other municipalities that, like y'all said, there's no reason to recreate the will, or we can do one from scratch, whatever y'all wanna do. I would recommend just copying in other cities, just because the works haven't been done, and, uh, but y'all tell me what to do.
My only thought was that, um...
Neil? I think that's fine to look at other cities, but we still normally need to probably modify that for Sky Valley.
Probably so, I mean, we're...
And the other thing, as a responsible dog owner all my life, until last year, but now I have a cat, um, I always, without any ordinance, when we went onto any public property, the dog was on a leash, and when I walked it on the streets of Sky Valley, it was on a leash, because I didn't want a car coming around the corner that would have to swerve because I was, had a dog and they didn't immediately see it, and there's roads like that when you come around the curve, especially on the street where I live. So, I think it would be a good idea to require a leash on public property. And secondly, what I think we need to do is create a small, not too small, but a reasonably sized, uh, dog park, and I've already pointed out an area where I think it could be an inexpensive way to do it, where people could come in. We decided to have to build maybe a, what do you call those things, a small area that you can shade a couple, what do you call those little round things we could set up aside?
A gazebo?
Gazebo, yeah. Put a gazebo in there, put some fencing, not fancy, modern, expensive fencing around it, uh, so we can have a dog park, because I think the park, actual park across from the post office, uh, should be, since it's already been established as a walking park and things like that by former council, leave that alone, put a place for a dog park, and I can show you, I showed you later, and make a dog park. Then, and then they have people, if they want their dog to run and not on a leash, and they don't have a backyard or place to, they can come there, there's adequate parking close by, and make, uh, that's my thinking for a, a city to consider. And that's just a statement. This is a work session, and that's why we can talk about these things, that's why I like work sessions, because now we can get public input, we can get other council input, we don't have to vote on it. End of speech.
Okay.
I think that's what we ought to consider.
As far as animal control goes, we're, we're in negotiations, y'all know, in S D S. There are three routes to go with animal control officers. We either have our own, we stick with Raven County, which as I say, is being funded by Sky Valley right now for eight thousand twenty-five dollars a year, um, eight hours a day, or we've taken consideration if Raven County is capable or able to create a twenty-four hour service with Paws, which they're trying to do. So, those three things need to be considered, I think, and if, if you're gonna rewrite an ordinance, do, you know, you're gonna have to take those three choices into consideration. Do we need the answer to, you know, determine which one of the three we're going in order to amend an ordinance? I would say yes.
Yeah.
Or that too.
And that having Paws as a resource facility, I think it would be required no matter what we did.
Well, we don't know what the cost would be. We have the opportunity, we could re, we could also contract with Paws ourselves. That's a, be a fourth option.
But, yeah, that's an emergency situation.
You got a lady back here, her operation really...
We're not through yet. Will you please clarify how this situation works, everybody don't have their arm up for an hour?
Well, I've clarified this, that when we're all done discussing, then we will ask...
You asked him already a question, so I thought we was only...
He is part of his group, and we didn't wanna set him up here to make him feel like he was part of the group, so we put him back there in the corner because he's quieter. All right, now, is there any more questions for me?
I'm free.
Okay. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, sir. Um, one thing that has not been discussed, I do live on two forty-eight West Sugardose. I want my dog on a leash. I've had two dogs for the last couple of years, one passed away last year, and I have been attacked by dogs without a leash on my road, on front of my house, to my dogs. So, yes, I am a hundred percent, everybody should be walking on a leash, because they could kill my dog and we're gonna be responsible, number one. Number two, I believe on a shock leash that they're talking about, there is a limit that the dog could run away, see a squirrel, run away, you have no control of that dog after certain time, um, time, right? So, I don't believe a shock would concern, like, if you wanna take him someplace else outside of Sky Valley, that's your decision, but in Sky Valley, someone attacks my dog, someone kills my dog, I got twice been bitten, my dogs got bitten by a dog without the leash. So, that's something no one has brought up here, and I'm sorry.
Did you report that to the police?
No, I did not report it, I didn't know whose the dog was.
Okay, we, we, we know, well, anything that should be reported to the police, even if you didn't know it was a...
I'm telling you, twice since I've been living there, it's, dogs are all over the place without a leash, and they can get bitten by something, they can get rabies, and you don't know that that dog will give rabies to me, to the dog or anybody else, just because it's wandering on its own.
It's a stray dog.
Yeah, it's having to meet in my house.
All right. Thank you very much.
No, it was a stray dog.
We move on to item number six.
Mr. Mayor?
No.
Five.
Mr. Mayor?
Number six, your billboard. Uh, well, we're talking about signs, right? And we had a three-way marketing committee meeting, and we're, we're to market things, and kind of at the end of the meeting, breaking up, they wanted to know, you know, a place for a billboard. And I just bring this up for consideration, every person that, not every person, but the majority of people that come into this area looking for second homes, weekend, whatever, they turn at the light and dillards and come either right by us, right by Sky Valley most of the time, we're trying to get them to turn in, our realtors would love them, but they go Highlands, Cashiers, and Parks, points, uh, east, I guess it is. And we have a visitor center, okay? Come right up there, come over the hill, big sign, visitor center, and a lot of people stop there for multiple reasons. Not that many turn into real estate opportunity. And not many people know about Sky Valley, and there's a sign down there, but they're traveling fifty miles an hour, fifty-five, small sign, Sky Valley, city of Sky Valley. There's a stone sign over at the left at the very intersection where you, by the time they see it, they're past the corner store or whatever, and it's not very well seen yet. My idea was to put up a billboard, not a gigantic one, but certainly big enough to catch, first against those trees at the far end of the past, the visitor center, that advertises all we wanna try to get it hooked on, that says, "Sky Valley," you know, next turn, next right, and then you try to, you try to put on there the hooks, you know, uh, seasonable accommodations, rental units, hiking, golf, public golf, whatever, you know, but just snippets of things that catch their attention. You can't have big sentences or anything, and I'm not a marketer, uh, person. I mean, that's not my idea, but we can get people and tell us how to get people to turn into Sky Valley for one reason or another, and that's just an idea I wanna throw out. I really haven't had a chance to develop it as, as Milton says, I haven't been around here in the, that's the last week or two. So, I wanted to throw out to council for consideration for a future, uh, more detailed discussion in our work session, and if you could think about that, drive by and think about it. I'd like to talk, I'd like to get anybody's input, uh, well... Number one, we can, uh, leave it in your capable hands to give the price on all this, and come back at a later date when you have this, uh, what should be on it, talk to people that what should be on it, the size of it, the cost of it. I'd have some ideas.
First thing I see on it, Bob, we're probably gonna have to address is the fifty square feet, that's kind of small.
Yeah, well, I'm sure we're not...
Ordinance goes.
Yeah, ordinance. I mean, I already mentioned that to them.
It's industrial.
Yeah, that was, that was what I was gonna say. We don't have an industrial, so...
Mark and Brown.
We can maybe say billboard, uh, industrial.
It's allowed in industrial, only we just have none of the property.
We do, we don't have it here, because we, we talked about it.
So, that's got to be...
So, the ordinance would have to be changed naturally, so that'd be part of it. I'll track it together and I'll find out.
You have a question?
That was my second.
Oh, yeah, I wasn't, okay.
All right.
Okay, let's move on to hotel, motel tax development, and we're last, Chip.
Well, I asked our attorney, he was doing some investigation for us, uh, we have documents here that I, I have read through and understand the downtown development authority was actually granted by the state to all cities. I think...
Our city's dormant right now.
I was gonna say, it sounds like it was granted by the state, it remains in the dormant state until we activate it. Tell us about activating it and what your thoughts.
Um, I don't have the statute in front of me, but I've done this for other cities. There is, what Chip was saying, the state has created these downtown development authorities for every city in... for every city in the state. In order to activate it, there's a statute, it's entitled thirty-six, chapter forty-two. Basically, what the city would do is just pass an ordinance saying that we want to create our downtown development authority. And then each D D A would, needs to have seven members on the board. And the city would appoint members to that. One would be from the city council, so one of y'all would be on the D D A board. The other members would be people who either live or have a business in the city. And so you would select those. That, so that, it would be created at that point. Now, the D D A is actually technically its own entity, it's not the city. Although, the way that a lot of cities run, if the city council kind of wants something, the D D A follows along with it, although technically by law, they don't have to. They're their own entity, they can make their own decisions as to what things they want to sponsor or bring in and things like that. So, do you have any specific questions about?
Well, I think to address your concerns, one of the things is, you know, the D D A is designed to, and I borrow that back, there's some points in there, the D D A designed its own funding sources, such as tax revenues, hotel motel taxes, et cetera. So this is how that's addressed, and I think you had the same question we discussed briefly last night. So, in other words, and a D D A, any debt of a D D A is not binding on the municipality.
Right, because it's separate.
And so I think that's one of the biggest concerns here. We've got people who have, you know, been questioning development authorities and why we do this, and what impact it's gonna have on financially. You know, that's not the point of the D D A. The point of the D D A is to be the entity to, or the vehicle in which to get, move forward. Also, D D As are, and correct me if I'm wrong, you get grants through D D As that you can't get through a municipality to help move us forward. And we need the D D A to be able to get access to those grants as well.
I mean, specific knowledge about that, but I wouldn't doubt that that's true.
Yeah, well, so I meant to get that when Adam was here earlier, because he could have spoken to that better than I can.
I'm not up to speed on this, but let me ask a question. Who does, does the D D A report to a higher authority in the city?
The D D A is its own entity.
And they can issue bonds?
They can, they can.
They tax essentially?
No, they cannot tax, but they can issue bonds.
Well.
Well, and then they can purchase property, lease property.
Bonds too, I think.
No, they don't have the power to actually levy taxes. You know, they could report to the city in the sense that they come in and announce to you what they're doing and giving updates like that, but the city has no authority to dictate to the D D A, once it's created, how they should be running their business. So they have to be, you know, aware of. Now, that's the law and how it is. You know, in reality, most D D As, especially in small towns, follow what the council wants. That's just the way that goes, although technically they don't have to.
Unless you have a rogue D D A.
And you possibly can.
And then they'll do whatever they want regardless of what anybody else wants.
That is possible.
That's one of the issues that I've got as far as this, is that the rosy part is pretty rosy. But if it gets into the gutter, it's gonna be pretty crappy. And how do you, and that's what I was talking to Chip about yesterday. How do we ensure that that's gonna happen the way you want it to happen when it's written? That it's a, it's its own authority. It's basically, you've got the city, and they can create the D D A, and the city's over here, the D D A is over here, and they can say whatever they want and not pay attention. They do not even tell the city that they're doing anything. So that was one of the concerns that I had, anticipating what people in the city would be concerned with. And the idea of floating a bond, I think, reflects on what Neil was saying about can, can, not will, in effect, raise taxes.
No, because they, I mean, they do not have the authority to levy taxes.
Who's responsible for any bonds that get floated?
The D D A.
And that's the thing is.
Right, and the D D A, in this case, would be the Sky Valley D D A, just like Clarksville's D D A does certain things. So, so I guess I'm still not catching the separation, having thought about what we talked about last night. I'm still Monday morning quarterbacking it. And so I'm just not clear on it.
Here's the thing, the bonds are not gonna be issued unless the D D A has a funding source. And what you're saying is the D D A doesn't have a funding source, so I don't think any bonds are ever gonna be issued.
Oh, okay. So if they get a fine funding source, then that's a different animal.
Right, but you're not gonna get a funding source without a proper plan in place, first place. I mean, it's like going down to a bank. People who buy bonds are not gonna buy a bond that's not backed up by a pretty substantial, you know, ability to repay that bond. Lyndon?
Mine is just strictly, we have different boards here already. We have enough trouble trying to fill those spots, but, and some of it could probably overlap, so we don't want it in council. But it is seven directors, and they're four-year terms, except for when you first initially do it to or for two members or, let's see. It says, shall be two years for two members, four years for two members, and six years for three members. So just keep that in mind, that's a big commitment for people don't, I mean, we have two-year terms because of that reason. People were not in favor of having the four-year terms.
Are these terms absolute though, or can they be amended?
No.
Is there a statute in the company?
No.
That's the thing, we need to study the statute thoroughly, which I haven't done, I admit.
And I think that was part of the reason of doing the before, we would kind of do the building authority, so we could have a smaller board and it's set up differently. But to do the D D A as been approved already, then you have to follow the.
Right. Okay.
Any more questions? Yes, sir.
I'm thinking about what Al said, and I think that probably if you polled the people in Sky Valley, most of them would not want to give up control of their feeling, of their control of the direction in Sky Valley, would want to go into a small group. Because it sounds like that would take it completely out of the voting populist control and be limited in that board, which has some long terms. And then also, it comes back again to the point of, you know, there is no established direction that the majority of the people at Sky Valley want to move in. You have a small group of people that assume and have been assuming that it wants to go in one certain direction. But yet, the thing that I know of, a poll of the majority of the people in Sky Valley knowing, what direction do we want to go in? To me, that, it comes back to, that's where this all needs to start. We need to find out what the majority of the people, what direction the majority of the people in Sky Valley want to go in. We keep assuming one thing that was from this heldover from this last administration, in the direction they were going, but most of the people that I know are not, were not happy with that.
Thank you. And Neil, all right, let's move on then to item eight, repealing ordinance fourteen oh six, Paul.
In fourteen oh six, is that the, that's the ten by ten area?
Yeah.
It's native shrubbery. Okay, in this, it's got a section seven A, clear cutting. Shall be the policy of the City of Sky Valley's native shrubbery, trees and undergrowth, such as Mount Laurel, rhododendrum, rare wildflowers, ferns, et cetera, shall be preserved insofar as practical and reasonable in order to retard surface runoff and soil erosion, and to protect their native species. Number two, clear cutting and the removal of native vegetation shall be prohibited, except as follows. Public roads, utilities, infrastructure, the home ignition zones, that's the perimeter around your house. Underbrushing or selective cutting of group of small trees or native shrubbery in excess of a ten-foot by ten-foot area may be allowed with a permit as long as a sufficient canopy and cover is left as a sizable buffer between the area to be cut and the public right-of-way or adjacent property owner. Number three, a permit shall be required for any such cutting or clearing. An application for clear cutting consistent with the policy enumerated in section A one for clear cutting shall be established by the city manager, and all applicable penalties and rights of appeal set forth in ordinance twelve dash oh one shall be applicable to this section. Have we had any violations of this ordinance this year? That you know of, city manager?
Um, not a violation, we are a big claimant.
We don't have a violation of.
Well, what happened is the first, this particular instance, the person got a tree cutting permit. Their intent was not necessarily to clear the underbrush, but when the cutting took place and the tree cutter raked down all the stuff to get it off the property, it essentially cleared some of that underbrush. So they then had to come in and pay the additional money to do that. So it's a yes and a no.
Okay, how many trees were permitted initially?
I don't have that information.
It was six.
Al has, it was six. How many trees were cut there on that, on that piece of property where there were six trees permitted? How many trees were cut?
I don't know.
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
And I, we've just, the council, we've been talking, and we hadn't heard any updates. We want to update on what ordinances we have in place have been violated and what's been done.
I sent our inspector out there, and he said there weren't any violations.
Okay, who does, who does the inspector work for? Who's his boss?
That's me.
Okay. Have you been out to the property?
I've seen pictures of it.
You have not been out to the property?
Okay. That's all I had. I might ask a question, if I may.
Sure, go ahead.
For a tree cutting permit, there are some trees you can cut without permit. Were some of those in the nineteen, are the balance of the nineteen in those, or do we know?
Yes.
That's.
That's, that's kind of.
The not paid for that tree's under eight inches.
That's my concern here, is paragraph eight tends to insinuate the word small tree is something other than a tree is defined in the ordinance as eight inches.
Right, so if you, if you look at the piece of property we're talking about, you're saying he got a permit, the additional cutting he did was allowed under the permit. But how did he not do excess of a ten-by-ten area? How did he not remove small trees and native shrubbery in excess of that?
That's what I'm saying, Bob gave him the permit to modify his permit to do that.
Well, it says a permit shall be required right here.
That's what I'm saying.
That's in advance, before you do it, not, you gotta do it, then get the permit, right?
He got the permit initially, and then there was additional when he was, the tree cutter was dragging it out. There was additional trees that got damaged when he was taking the other ones down. And he called and had Bob come back out there, which was not uncommon, that happened a lot. But then he, when he raked the debris down, it of course took out a lot of the, not, I'm not talking about the trees, but the underbrush.
But in fact, there were thirteen extra trees that were cut because there were stumps that wasn't ripped out. There were thirteen extra trees. The permit was for six trees, five live trees and one dead tree. The additional trees were cut after the permit was issued. On the top right-hand corner of the permit, Mr. Powers put in that there were the nineteen trees that were cut, and the additional charges were two hundred and ten dollars. When you figure out what he paid for the first five, the two hundred and ten comes to fifteen per tree, which is the normal price if he had asked for nineteen trees to be cut. So he's in violation of the permit that he asked for. And on the permit, it says in red lettering that if you violate this, you're, you can be fined up to, which means zero, up to a thousand dollars per tree. This particular individual was fined the normal fifteen dollars per tree. I believe, in a winding ridge, somebody cut some trees, not with the permit. And if I hear the rumors correctly, he was charged a thousand dollars a tree. My concern is, what's the standard?
That's up to the judge. I mean, he's gonna look at, in a citation.
It's up to what judge?
The city's judge. I mean, if we cite somebody for a violation, then it goes to our city court, municipal court.
So Winding Ridge went to a city court?
Yes.
But this one didn't.
Like I said, he told me there wasn't a violation. If the trees were under eight inches.
In order for it to go to court, it has to be cited first, so back your question up. Why was that one cited? Who cited that one? Who cited that guy on Winding Ridge at the top?
He did that without, he did that without permission.
He didn't have a permit at all.
He didn't have any permit.
Well, I don't think a permit for six gives you the right to permit a nineteen.
That isn't the point. The point is that the man up there cut all his trees without any permit.
It might, it's a violation of the ordinance either way. If I get a permit to cut five and cut down twenty, I violated the permit. If I don't get a permit at all to cut down twenty trees, I violated the tree permit. So how is it being enforced consistently over the years?
Well, Bob, and I'll go out there, but Bob told me that the other trees were not over eight inches.
He charged for them.
Why did he write them up there then?
He charged for them.
Well, you still have, well, but under the clear cutting.
He charged for some, so now it goes under the clear cutting, it's under eight inches, but I'm not following that.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I know.
There was a charge for taking down these extra trees. You know, I didn't see a notification in there that these extra trees were less than eight inches in diameter.
That's what he told me, though.
Well, first of all, did he go out and measure it? Because one of the issues that came up on another permit was that we couldn't do anything because the trees weren't marked. And a code enforcement officer isn't going to go out and mark the trees. So what's, there seems to be a lack of consistency on what's going on here. And it's like, well, it's different for Al than it is for Doug, than it is for Bob, and as opposed to it should be consistently across the board.
I agree.
So I guess, I guess that's what we're talking about here. We're trying to get it so that we understand, you know, what's the baseline on things.
Okay.
You know, violation of the permit is a violation of the permit. That's a really simplistic way to put it. But, and it's more complicated than that. But if you start breaking it down, then you don't have a permit and you get fined. If you have a permit, but you don't pay attention to what the permit says, you don't get fined.
Well, that's not always the case either. This, what happens, and we've had it happen in multiple situations, is people will get a permit to cut the big trees. Say there's six. Well, then, we give them the permit for the six trees. Well, then they cut those six trees, and then they go back and cut the. Well, then they cut those six trees, and then they go back and cut the little ones that don't count as a tree, and then you end up with a clear cut. So, you know, we tried to establish the clear cutting ordinance to fix that, but it's flawed too.
Okay, so here we go to the repeal then of fourteen oh six. We have an ordinance on the books, it's flawed, not achieving what it was meant to achieve, per our city manager. We have, we have this, and it's not working.
Correct, that's why I went to planning and zoning for two years to work on a new ordinance. I mean. I mean, we've, we've told you it's flawed, that's why we asked for different ordinance.
But, but in the looks of my eyes, it doesn't appear to, it doesn't appear that what we have is even being enforced. So why would we consider a whole nother ordinance when the one we have is not even being enforced?
I don't agree that it's not being enforced, no. Obviously, this needs to have another look at it.
Neil has a question.
Well, what I don't understand, trying to understand is, Al, you mentioned in red letters or something, if you, what was that statement again?
That, that if you're in violation of this tree cutting permit, that you can be in violation, it didn't say how you're in violation, if I remember correctly, and I can't find it right now, I know it was sent to me, that you can be fined up to a thousand dollars per tree, up to, which means zero at the low end and a thousand dollars at the high end. Probably that's, it's not set up right. It should be fined five hundred dollars at a minimum to a thousand dollars a maximum. That'd be a suggestion.
But anyway, that's all I wanted to know about it. It seems like our code enforcement officer essentially finding fifteen dollars a tree for the extra trees. That's one way you could look at it, if you wanna be kind of reasonable in looking at it. What we need to do is go back and address the tree ordinance that we didn't accept, that wasn't good, and I agree and I voted against it. But we need to get this back on the agenda for a committee that we appoint to revisit it with certain objectives stated in our, our direction to that committee. And maybe we can get something that does make sense, and that somebody can control with a little more specificity.
I'd just like to say that it's not uncommon for when they're taking down big trees, for other trees to get damaged in the process, and then call Bob back out to try to approve what's happened. That happens all the time.
So I never heard that you couldn't amend the tree per permit after the fact or at the time.
It should be amended prior to the fact. In other words, if I go get a permit to cut five trees, I might as well just get a permit to cut one, and I'll get through whatever I wanna do, then go back and pay for the difference, and that doesn't make any sense.
We, when we talk to our citizens and our citizens are mostly educated and try to follow the rule of law, and you're saying that everybody would just deviate and that, like, the way to get by was something. I don't believe our citizens are that great.
No, that's not, that was not my point, Neil. My point was, if I can go by a permit to cut one tree and then cut ten.
Well, you didn't cut ten until there was something that caused you to cut ten, is what I understand.
Right, that's what I'm trying to say, you don't know ahead of time that there was damage.
But if there was a call, let's just say that we had a collateral damage, as Neil's talking about. And I agree with that, that's when you call Bob and say, hey, Bob, I need you to look at this because we didn't intend to take this one or that one down at all, but the collateral damage was done, then Bob can make those notes and say, hey, it was collateral damage. But you understand what I'm getting at? But in other words, if there's no repercussions for getting the permit, okay, back from what I'm saying, I go get one, I'm gonna just permit one, and then I'll go back and pay you for whatever I actually cut. And that's what happened here.
Well, I still don't know that that's what happened here. If those trees are less than eight inches, nothing happened here, that was out of order. And that hasn't been confirmed, so go out there and measure the stuff.
But you have to measure it eighteen inches above the ground, so you're already.
Well.
Well, you pretty, you pretty well know from the stuff what that thing was like, I think.
You can get a permit for one tree or one, five trees.
We do need to get back to work on a tree.
I want to specify.
I've pulled up the thing, I tried to find it.
Yeah.
On the permit.
I'm looking at it too.
On the permit, it says, "Failure to obtain a tree cutting permit or cutting additional trees not approved by the city will be considered, will be considered a violation of the city's tree cutting ordinances and will be subject, and will subject the owner slash contractor to a fine not to exceed one thousand dollars per tree, as well as replanting requirements as set forth therein." Failure, and failure to remove, blah, 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 there's another thing in there. So I think we're coming back to is if, it's, yeah, but all if it was. And in this particular case, the permit was issued for six trees to be cut on five, or on two sixteen eighteen. Mr. Powers went back out there on four thirty eighteen and noted that a total tree cut or knockdown was nineteen.
That includes the small ones.
And he said there wasn't a violation? Now, that's the point, we haven't confirmed. That seems like the bit.
And if he did violate that, then he violated fourteen oh six.
But, and they're throwing it up, Paul, it sounds like it's being thrown under the umbrella of collateral damage.
Well, that's.
And if you go and look at that, it'd be hard for me to understand how that particular spot, and I don't care about the view into things, I think everybody knows my position on that. It's hard for me to understand how you got that much collateral damage. That's a lot of collateral damage. That's like saying, I want to shoot you, but I'm gonna use an out-of-control AR-15, and I'm gonna take everybody out. You know, it's just collateral damage. I took you out because that was an important thing.
It wasn't, I haven't heard that it was collateral damage.
That's what she's, that's what they're saying, that's what they're saying.
They could have taken some of the small trees anyway, don't get confused. There's, you can take.
I am confused.
No, under eight inches, if you weren't clear cutting an area under eight inches, you wouldn't have had to get a permit for that anyway. But then, in addition to whatever small trees they may have planned on taking out, which we don't permit, which we don't even know about, then there was collateral damage in getting, in cutting the big ones and in raking the other down.
Well, we need to get back to the tree ordinance. Number one is a long time between that, when was the cutting actually done? The permit was in February?
Yeah.
When was the actual cutting?
About ninety days on the permit.
So does that, does there any, there's not a requirement for the homeowner after he gets the permit to advise the city when the cutter will come? So that our inspector can go at the time, if he's available, to see what's going on and make sure that we don't have this kind of problem. So that's another reason why we need to get a better ordinance.
Like I said, Lyndon and I talked about the term "small tree." Small does not change the definition of the word "tree."
Yeah, we need to get, well, that's right, so I agree.
I mean, that's, that was a bit.
But the longer we wait to get something going with it, trying to get a better, not perfect, ordinance, the more of this.
And there's a, there is a lot of confusion over the, because I've talked to Ellen and Elise about this when people call in, because the eight-inch tree thing, well, you think under eight inches doesn't require a permit? And then I'm in the other office yelling, and Elise's saying, unless you're clearing more than a ten-by-ten, you know? So, I mean, it's, there's just a problem with that, and that's.
Well, I've still got a ten-by-ten problem with, with trees. I don't necessarily have it with rhododendrons and natural stuff, but I mean, a ten-by-ten area with tree, you know, trees, small, which will be big in a short period of time. I mean, those of us who've been around here long enough know what Sky Valley looked like in the nineteen eighties, and I've got houses listed in the seventies where they've got the construction pictures, especially one of them is up here on Sky High Drive, and not tree one and around it. And, you know, so, anyway, they do come back.
Well, we've run this meeting by our two-hour session. So the last three items, I think we can postpone those until next meeting. So other than that, if we have no more further business, I ask for an adjournment. Do I have a motion?
I may come up to you.
I'll say, I would say, second.